Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, June 7, 2023. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order at City Hall in Council Chambers, 1123 West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding. Also present are Councilors Kate McAllister, Deb Rule, Joel Espiro, Andy Groth, Jason Walker, and Justin Dick. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God.
Get through that.
Before we proceed, I'd like to announce that we'll be making a minor adjustment to the order of new business items, moving items 8B through 8D up to the top of new business. We will address Agenda Item 8A, Partnership Agreement with Bonner County Historical Museum, Historical Society, rather, directly after Item 8D. Are there any announcements from Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So I would like to put out a plug for our museum. So the, it's an invaluable resource for a community this size. And so this is Sandpoint's Early History by Gary Peach. I picked this up at an antique thing at Bonner County charity thing that our museum had. Picked it up just as something to read. I just got through it and it, it, if you were ever interested in to know why our streets are named after ladies, lakes, and trees, if you want to know why some of them are 80 feet and some of them are 60 feet, if you want to have a better understanding of how our troubles might seem large and unusual and unique today, this is a history lesson by Gary. Will remind you of the resilience of this town and the people that have come before. And although our struggles are challenging, they are not unique to our strong community. So, thank you, Heather. Thank you, Bonner County Museum. And for all of us in the community, do what we can to continue to support them and make history. Thank you.
Awesome. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I need to address something that's been floating around here. There was a video from a Dutch television news network. There was about 10 minutes long that came along sometime last month. And we've had a number of citizens email into council, plenty of phone calls, and a number of visits within the last 10 to 15 days. I certainly recognize that the mayor is our chief executive and is well within his right to speak. I do want to make sure that everyone understands that when he speaks and the pieces that got used, and I don't know how much got spliced up and how much time was actually said and what they actually used in that video. And there was a lot of old footage in that video from the early 1990s, it looked like, as well, promoting what they thought Idaho and North Idaho was currently today in terms of our racial climate. I do want to say that those comments do not reflect on this body and specifically not myself. I've been here since 2006 and I have not, in any shape or form, run into any of those folks in our community. And I think I run into a pretty large sample size of our community, although I might understand that they may exist in our community as well. But I do want to make sure that our silence isn't consensus to what was said in that video. Thank you.
Any other announcements from Council?
Mr. Mayor, Justin, thank you for bringing that up. I too got a lot of emails with that concern as well. And I'd just like to piggyback off that. I've lived here since I was eight years old. I am Latino and I personally have never had experienced any racial slurs or anything of that nature. We actually have a really cool community. I think we get along pretty well, very well. I don't think the race is the main issue in our community that we have. And I appreciate all the people in this community and how well we can get along. So I just want to encourage us to keep doing that. And, and I don't think that video also reflects who we are as a community, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other council members having something they want to share? Oh, good. Okay. Staff?
Yes, Heather, our Arts Historic Preservation Officer is going to announce our Call for Artists for the Silver Box Program.
Yes, I'm so excited. So we have the Art on Loan program and it is open to artists now through Cafe, which is a wonderful call to artist platform. And that's www.callforentry.org. And we encourage all of our local artists to go on there and apply. As a reminder, this is a year-long opportunity for them to showcase their art and have it up for sale. And so we're really looking forward to seeing what entries we get. And the Call for Artists will be closing on July 3rd. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Post it up on our website, the link for that too, and on our Facebook page, probably.
Okay, great. Is that it from staff?
Yes.
Okay. Well, now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which gives the public the opportunity to address the council and myself on items either on the consent calendar or in any item not listed on the agenda. If anyone here in council chambers wishes to speak now during the public forum or during any other portion of the meeting, you must complete a public comment form, which is available at the front table by the front door. Fill it out and please hand it to the staff table, anyone at the table back there. Would be great. Appreciate that. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak, you will need to raise your hand on Zoom at this time. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to the public forum now at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so, we will reopen the public hearing at the end of our regular agenda. I ask for your attention, please, as I recite the rules and procedures for public comment during public forum, as well as for other opportunities for public comment during the meeting this evening. Council may not hear or take testimony during public forum on any planning and zoning matter that is before the city or is known to be a likely application. Such testimony is allowed only during the properly noticed public hearing. Issues regarding the performance of city employees constitute matters that must be discussed only in executive session and are not appropriate during the public portion of the meeting. Matters that have been previously heard and decided by the council may be determined to be inappropriate for public forum. Citizens may use this time to request that items be placed on a future agenda for further discussion. Those in attendance are not to disrupt this meeting or the business at the hand that's being taken up by council. Disruptive behavior includes clapping, disruptive noise, and comments or exclamations from the audience. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed in a individual organization or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for public comments only. Please do not direct any questions to myself, council, or staff, and please do not approach the dais. Also, please do not approach the clerk here in the front. You may inquire of staff at the back of the table. Everyone there at the large table in the back is on staff and they're able to help you if you have any questions or need assistance with anything. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and whether or not you reside within the city limits. That concludes, that concludes our rules and regulations here. Madam Clerk, have we, have we anyone signed up to speak during the public forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Stephen Meyer.
Hi, my name's Stephen Meyer. I'm a resident of Sandpoint. And I just would like to address the proposed resolution for the adoption of the Little Sand Creek Watershed Recreation Plan. And.
We will have time during that, I believe, to see on that item.
Mr. Meyer, if you can save those comments for that agenda item as it comes up later in the evening. Thank you. Appreciate that. As Madam Clerk, do we, yeah, got another one? Okay, here we go.
Good evening. What's the time on the clock?
Three minutes.
Two minutes. All right. Well, I think I'd just like to speak to what was brought up by Justin earlier. I apologize if I'm not as prepared as I should be. I did have a few moments to put a couple of words together to try to look somewhat organized. But the tongue has the power of life and death, and those who love it will eat its fruit. By your words, you will be acquitted. By your words, you will be condemned. You will give an account for every careless word you have spoken. The words of the reckless pierce like swords, but the tongue of the wise brings healing. Sticks and stones may break my bones, but words can never hurt me. This fairy tale childhood saying couldn't be further from the truth. Every person here bears deep scars upon their heart, their soul, their mind, their body, from wounds from careless and intentionally hurtful words. The problem with sticks and stones is that they only can break your bones. Words can actually pierce the very being and spirit of who you are. As, as an American conservative, Jesus-loving disciple of the kingdom of good, all things righteous, all things holy, I, I don't get triggered easily. I usually give people space, but what was said and what was brought up earlier in the very beginning of the meeting hurt it deep. I find it, I find that words of shame, hate, and fear are the most divisive. Slander negativity have wreaked havoc on every precious soul in this room. And it is, and it is a word that holds together the universe. And interestingly enough, and it's the word, and it's a word that will destroy it. And that, but the word that keeps the universe together is love. And that love is a person whose name is Jesus. And I just want to say, I think it's, it's just interesting. I, I want to keep the emotional side of things in control because I know that we all have moments where we say things poorly. I know I have. I need, I need just as much grace as anybody else. But I think as a leader, it's really important that someone goes, takes a lot of time to speak very carefully about very delicate issues. It's really, really important. I just think it's funny because I'll just leave you with this and maybe you guys can hum along with me. Alanis Morissette has a song, "It's a little bit ironic," don't you think? That you wanted a city of refuge a few years ago for people running from the Taliban, but now you liken Christian conservatives to the Taliban.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Egan. Heartfelt. Appreciate that.
Brandon Singh.
Hello, I'm Brandon Singh and I am also a, I live in the city limits. And I actually absolutely share every bit of, every word and that Ryan has shared with us. I'm here actually as well to just hopefully dig a little deeper into, I know you said directly, but can you respond to what Justin has commented about? And Joel as well, and what Ryan's talking about?
We're not going to have a dialogue here. If you'd like to make comments, this public forum is for public comments only.
Yeah.
So if you have a statement or something you'd like to say, now's your opportunity.
Okay. I was just seeking to, a way that you could respond to what everyone's talking about outside of maybe, maybe what you expect from each, you know, this time or something like that. We don't get a whole lot of time nailed down. I know that you nailed down meetings around town and, you know, decide, pick and choose who you meet with. And sometimes, you know, this is a setting where it'd be nice to get, to kind of get a better feel for, you know, what your understanding is or what you could share as far as like what we're talking about. Maybe you could just give us that much, a little bit, instead of just a thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singh.
Thanks.
Janine Shepherd.
Janine Shepherd, Bonner County. Just came to pray for you guys today as you begin your meeting. If you'd like, you can join me in praying. Dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for a time to stop and pray to you, Lord. You bless us in so many ways and we want to first say thank you. We see your goodness in so many ways in our lives and we thank you for our city and we ask that your Holy Spirit would rest upon it. Fill the room tonight with your Spirit, Lord, guiding and directing our council members and mayor in all that they do tonight. Give them ears to hear what you want to do, which direction you want them to go, and make a clear path that glorifies you. Because first and foremost, Lord, we want to glorify you. We lift up each decision to be made tonight and ask in our hearts to lay each at your feet, asking you to lead us. Give understanding beyond ourselves relying only on you. We know your ways are best, then in seeking you, we will find true peace. For those here who don't know you, Lord, I ask that you reveal yourself to them. Make your presence known in real and tangible ways, covering them with your peace. You are so merciful, Lord, in calling each and every one of us to you, desiring to have a relationship with each of us. Help everyone here to know of your great love and mercy. Bless this time and bless each one here. In Jesus's name, amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
Mr. Mayor, let me check on Zoom.
Okay.
There are no hands raised and we have no one else to speak during public forum.
Okay, looks like one more, maybe. Okay.
Molly O'Reilly.
I'm Molly O'Reilly and I live in the city limits. And I haven't seen the video that was discussed earlier, but I'm a 20-plus-year Sandpoint resident who has not felt comfortable inviting my black friends to visit me. I have been concerned about what they would actually find here and how they might be treated. And I'm reassured by people's statements that this isn't the kind of community we are and that I should feel comfortable and will invite them to come visit. And we're going to have a Pride event here in middle of July. This is another opportunity for our community to prove that it is inclusive and welcomes everybody and celebrates them. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. O'Reilly. Appreciate those comments. Okay. I would like to take this opportunity and address the counselor's comments and that of Mr. Egan and Mr. Singh. I appreciate you coming in tonight and particularly Mr. Egan, I really felt touched by your words. I've had a couple of people come up to me out in the community who have also brought this up. And I actually haven't seen the video. I obviously was in that interview. It was almost a year ago. It was last summer. So I don't know, you know, what was, what was cut in and what was cut out and if it captured the context of the whole conversation or not. But, but I can't speak to what my intent there was and what it was not. And one thing that I was, that I recall speaking to in that video was the polarization that I see in our community. And this was a time, it was about a year ago, when I felt particularly impacted by this. And I was probably in a place where I was frustrated and angry. And I think it was that, that right after the time when there was a vanload of people that were arrested by the Acutney County Sheriff and police who were going to, their plan was to raid the Pride event down in Coeur d'Alene, as I recall. It was in the front page of the paper at the time. And this, this was just kind of another example of a series of examples that, that I've seen kind of play out in our community and in our nation. And one thing that has been frustrating to me as an elected official over the eight years plus of my service here is the increasing polarization, both on the, on the far right and on the far left. And I've sought to be an elected official, a representative of people that seeks to represent everybody and seeks to bring everybody to a common ground in somewhere in the middle, somewhere where we can all remember who we are and what we value and, and remember that we're all in this community together. And we're all trying to do our best to, in our lives. We're trying to be the best people that we can be. And we're trying to be the best neighbor and the best coworker, the best father, the best mother, the best friend, the best community member. And I know it's been hard for all of us. I know it's been hard for me. At times, I've, I've been frustrated. I've been angry. I've made mistakes. I've said things that I've regretted. I've also felt like I, maybe I haven't said enough sometimes. And sometimes I need to take a stronger stance. And as an elected official, particularly in these times, it can be a very fine line to walk. And it can be perilous on all sides. So I've done my best to walk that line. I feel strongly that I need to speak out when there's threats of violence in our community. And that's what I was referring to in that video. And maybe I didn't say it as accurately and as carefully as I should have. But, and what I was speaking to was what I have seen is a large outside influence come into our community from the outside with a militant attitude and approach. And, and that concerns me. I think it should concern all of us, especially when there's tones of bigotry behind it. And Joel, I'm, I'm happy to hear that you haven't experienced racism or bigotry in, in your life here in this town. And I'm pleased to hear that. And I hope everybody has that experience here. And I've certainly, you know, my experience of Sandpoint, you know, the reason I came here in the first place, I was attracted to the lake and the mountains and the beauty. And the reason I stayed is because of the people. I love the people here. I was immediately drawn to how open-hearted and authentic and honest everybody seems to be here. Doesn't matter what side of the quote-unquote fence you are on, where we're all kind of on the same boat here. And we're all, we all sort of appreciate the lake. We appreciate the mountains. We appreciate the access to the outdoors and recreation. We appreciate our community and we just do our best. And we're just real. We're real people here. So that's what I love about this place and I think that's what is authentically Sandpoint. And that's certainly what I value and, and I try to be that person too. And I've made mistakes. If I've said anything or hurt anyone's feelings or made anyone feel judged or excluded or criticized, I apologize for that. That certainly was not my intention. My intention is to protect our community and to try to bring us all together. I think you said it really well, Ryan. Words, you know, you spoke words of love and heart and that's, that's what we should be rallying around. And that's what I aspire to do. And sometimes my words are divisive and I'm imperfect too. And I'm trying to do my best there. So I apologize if I offended you. I certainly did not mean to, or anyone else in this room or anyone else in the community. But I also think that it's critical to, to stand strong for protecting public safety and protecting what we are as a community when people threaten that with violence or, or, or attitudes that are non-conducive to a loving cohesive community. So I don't think I have anything else to say, but thank you for hearing me on that. I appreciate you having the courage to step up here and speak your mind and heart. And with that, we will move on to the regular agenda. So first up, we have the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $498,634.02 for regular payables. Does council have any question, have any questions? Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Okay. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion that the consent calendar be approved?
They're moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Groth.
Yes.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Counselor McAllister.
Yes.
Counselor Spuro.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Consent collars approved. The first item under all business, council will consider adoption of the Little Sand Creek Watershed Recreation Plan, the long-awaited. Now you have the floor to Parks and Planning, Parks Planning and Development Manager, Maeve Nevins-Labtar. There she is. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, as I warned you two weeks ago, I will be stepping down for this. I've been very involved in this project for the last couple of years. So I'm excited to see Maeve's presentation from the audience.
Hey, and thank you very much, everyone. We have tonight joining us Betsy Burn, my project manager with the National Park Service Rivers, Trails, and Conservation Assistance Program. And Betsy's on Zoom if we have any questions for her. So last, we, our last council, I gave a pretty robust presentation or we gave a pretty robust presentation and we have since done some edits. So I'm, tonight I'm only going to call to your attention some of the edits that we made. But for the most part, there isn't anything drastic to call, call out. I'm just going to go through one by one. But overall, we have the presentation, the entire packet is now posted on our Open Gov website. If you haven't seen it, we do have a link available. And there's a comment section and everyone can read the comments there. I have additionally been receiving comments for about the last three months that we've been working on this from our stakeholders and our advisory groups and also from members of the public that have come via email. And we have an ongoing document that we are capturing all of the feedback and that will be put into the document as an appendix that will forever be part of this document's life. So whenever a project goes forward, those comments will be part of it. So some of the editing that we did was, I'm going to scroll to the appendix. And I'm going to ask Betsy to speak to this. But one of the first items is we, we beefed up this section about clean water. And the reason for that is that we see feedback. There is a couple of different criterias out there for protecting the clean water. And I'm just going to call attention to the number one guiding goal of the original, the Little Sand Creek Watershed Plan, and that was to protect the water. And that has been our guiding document or our guiding vision the whole way through. And Betsy, if you wouldn't mind chiming in and telling them how we beefed up the water protection.
Yeah, we have always been most concerned about protecting the drinking water, but we also wanted to find ways to incorporate, you know, responsible recreation into the watershed. So in looking at where we could put recreation corridors, one of the things we looked at was protecting a buffer zone around the creeks and wetlands in the, in the watershed. We originally were following the guidelines that were in the Little Sand Creek Watershed Management Plan. And then when we were talking to, you know, kind of to some folks and getting some feedback on this, we were pointed to the Idaho Panhandle National Forest Land Management Plan, which defines a buffer that's a little bit more robust than ours was, which is 300 feet slope distance from perennial fish bearing stream. So like Little Sand Creek, there would now be a 300 feet slope distance from that, which doesn't affect much in the plan because most of our trails are proposed to be sort of in the lower basin area. It's actually away from the, from Little Sand Creek. But we did want to use the kind of same buffer system that the Forest Service was using because, you know, this, this plan does incorporate some Forest Service land into the, the larger trail network. So, yeah, we wanted to kind of match what the Forest Service was doing there.
Yeah. And to piggyback on that, another good point of why we do that is because we are sharing the watershed recreation plan with other agencies and other landowners. So while the watershed management plan was focused around the city of Sandpoint's parcels, which is just shy of 5,000 acres of the 8,000 total area, by doing these standards to the federal level, it does support us as we move forward on the Forest Service land as well as the Bureau of Land Management, the BLM parcels. And we are actively moving forward with some of our trail design. So we're, we're going from concept to trail design. And that will trigger something called the NEPA process. And so automatically, we're checking some of the boxes that they're going to be looking for when it comes to protecting the water on. And so automatically, we're checking some of the boxes that they're going to be looking for when it comes to protecting the water on federal lands. And so I think that that's a, that was a good move on our end and also in alignment with all of the goals, all of the feedback we've heard through our community outreach. Um, the next big thing I want to call to your attention is um, the trails plan itself. There is a second appendix item. And the trails plan is um appendix A, and that is a conceptual level trail planning document. And it was completed by Imba, the Trail Solutions Team. The recreation plan incorporates that information, but to remind everyone that we are at the conceptual thirty thousand foot level, very, very high level. So while we do have a roadmap um for moving forward and we did identify zones and trails. Uh, and areas, particularly in the lower basin and the upper portion of the watershed where the trails would go. It is still conceptual and they're not not much more than lines on paper. Or I would, or I would call it cartoons at this point. We've heard that term before when we talk about concepts. We're a little bit more meteor than a cartoon, but um it is very, very high level. And the International Mountain Bike Association just last week released a new document. It's a guideline for planning um professionals. And we did cite that in our appendix ever as a reference material. But it literally has conceptual planning as step one of about eleven steps before you're actually implementing a trail plan. So there's a lot of things that have to happen um before you actually develop a plan. And it might might seem like we have this blueprint and that we're just going to move forward and charge full speed ahead. But no, no, no. Number one, we need to have more data collected in various parcels. The city of Sandpoint did a very good job of collecting data back when we did the watershed management plan. But remember, we're only talking about one landowner. And as we move forward as a recreation group, our recommendation is to move holistically on all parcels. And so that means we need to collect data everywhere. And then number two, we will actually field fit these plans. And so what that means, our professional consultants, who are professional trail designers, will be um onsite as soon as next week. Starting um to lay out some of those more higher priority trails. Um, the highest priority is the downhill in the lower basin um as per the agreement from two thousand and fifteen. With the Ponderay Peddlers, well, they were charged with decommissioning an existing downhill and and then building the new one. And so we are not building yet. We're still in that brown tree being designed and then we'll move to decommissioning and building um in twenty twenty-four and beyond. And so just to clarify that process, I've had a lot of feedback from the trail community who's concerned that there's not a line exactly where they would like it to go. And there will be ample opportunities to continue these these public input points and also flushing out exactly where the trails end up. Um, and what type of trail and what type of user is incorporated. Um, the next item that we uh cleaned up was the Nordic skiing winter recreation. We just added some clarifications. When we first wrote it, it was very high level. Um, and I just beefed it up a little bit more to point out that again, we need more data. We don't have enough information, number one. Number two, the short-term most obvious goal for Nordic skiing and winter recreation is a partnership and collaboration with Schweitzer. Um, Schweitzer owns the majority of the upper portions of the watershed and they have a robust Nordic program already in place. They already have the grooming equipment and um for a nominal fee, you can buy a season pass. When I talk about partnerships with them, we are in collaboration. They have been part of our partnership from day one. And we are going to continue those opportunities to look for um points where we could have community-focused um potential partnerships. Whether that means that we have a community pass, I don't know. We haven't started those conversations. But one of the action items is specifically to look at what that partnership could look like. And then in the long term, we identified that Nordic skiing, fat biking, winter recreation are all valuable recreations. That we would like to continue to explore as we develop trails going forward. So we did clarify some of that stuff. Um, the fourth item is under conservation and um I'm pulling up now on the screen the priorities for action. Um, through the development of this chart that we developed as um the the backend. And this is sort of the cheat sheet of the entire plan. We have about seven pages of action items. And you can see on the left-hand side, the first column or category references what section we're talking about. So in this section, on this page, we're talking about trailheads and then all the actions that were identified are called out. And then we bring them. This will probably go through another round of revisions of ranking. Because um, you know, again, one of the first things that we talked about was coming together and creating a collaborative group of all of these landowners, which would be um the first step. And my first recommendation is that they would go through this action plan and make sure that we're in alignment with the priorities. Um, and then this, the the third, fourth category is the stakeholders. Those are the stakeholders that we are, we know of. And then the fifth one would be the potential partners, and those are known partners. But of course, as nonprofits come forward and other partnerships come forward and other user groups for different recreation groups come forward, they would be added to that column. Um, so under conservation, we did beef up some items in there and added again more clarity um and referenced. Um, as as uh we were just talking about, referenced some of the existing conditions and some things to call to action. Um, and also um I want to bring to your attention that we did uh write a small section about indigenous-led conservation. And what that means is that there is actually a movement in the conservation realm to bring um indigenous tribal leaders. Or uh people who are experts in natural resource management and conservation from indigenous tribes. To be part of our conservation planning and uh management. And the reason that we do that is that um tribal, particularly the Kalispel in this area. Uh, tribal members work here historically and we know that, we can prove that. Um, in fact, I was just at an archaeological dig on Monday over in Washington and they unearthed a five thousand-year-old oven. So we know for a fact, we cannot dispel this, um, that there were um and continue to be indigenous uh tribal uh tribal members here. And they will continue to be in the future. And so there's no one better to ask, how do you take care of the land and the natural resources? Than our indigenous community members. And so we do have that in there, but it starts with a conversation. And we're not quite even to the point where we know if they want to have a role. So again, going back to those initial high-level um uh conversations and collaborative partnership opportunities. Um, so then the other thing I want to call to your attention, if you are into placemaking, arts, um cultural side. There is a pretty robust section on placemaking, education, signage, all of that. And that also ties into not just our community of indigenous historical members, but the but the most uh recent settlers. And just honoring our history throughout time in placemaking and um and preservation. And honoring uh ecological sites and um planning for that from a cultural perspective. Um, and then we also clarified some of our safety items. We have been working closely with our emergency responders. As you know, if you've been on the trail system, we already have a a robust signage system up there with GPS-coordinated intersections. And there's um at every intersection now, there's a red cross with a number and a letter, and that is a GPS system. So if you are hurt out on the trail, or even if you want to make a date to meet someone on a trail, you can call your friend or you can call Ian also. Let him know where you are by using that code system and that's already working. But we defined it a little bit more because concurrently, while we've been developing this plan. I've also been working with the Ponderay Peddlers on their license agreement renewal. And we just went through that at the last council meeting, but that renewal has also refined this a little bit more. Um, and so we talk about that. Um, and then finally, the funding has really been clarified as well. And um, to finish this out, I've added a a pretty robust section um at the very, very end. And you can see there's about six or seven action items here that identify everything from suggestions of how we could raise money. Um, to uh, you know, ways that other communities have done it in in areas where there isn't currently funding for recreation. So again, these are high-level ideas and the very first action step out of all this is to actually create a committee shopping, right? Everything says create a committee and let's let's continue our planning conversations. But um, I think you'll find that a lot of these I, these calls to actions overlap each other and the committee members would probably be the same. Um, and we did include two uh examples in here in our appendix of various collaborative efforts. So we do have a framework for collaboration that we use. And one of them is locally with the Selkirk um uh invasive weeds uh cooperative group. And that is a regional uh group that works on the invasive weeds in the area. And that was a really good model to use because it's a non-binding agreement. We're not necessarily taking money from these different landowners. We're just saying that we agree to work together as we move forward strategically on various implementation items. So um, with that, you do have a resolution in front of you. And I'd like to offer, if you have any questions, you have Betsy and I at your service.
Counsel, any questions for Maeve or Betsy?
Go ahead, Justin.
Oh, uh, just a quick comment. No questions. I just want to say thank you and kudos to all the organizations, all of the people, all of the nonprofits. Uh, everybody who worked on this. Uh, for those of you know of me, I see some people out here that I did leadership standpoint with years ago. That was probably the last time I was on a trail or on a bike or on anything like this, to be perfectly honest. Um, I found that this was a spectacular read. I think this should be mandatory reading for everybody in our community. How to preserve uh the, our drinking water and being able to recreate around it. Uh, and bring this many people together uh to put this together. I just want to say kudos to everybody involved. This was amazing.
Appreciate those comments, counselor.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm asking Andy once.
We're good.
Um, I would just like to thank everybody who worked on this. I know Maeve has worked really hard. Jason has worked really hard. Mike, our former president, um, other people have been involved from the very beginning, from the very first Ponderay Peddlers. Um, president all the way through consecutive ones. I see a lot of people sitting out here in the audience who've been working and putting their time in and don't always necessarily get the credit for that. But we wouldn't be here making an amazing plan to protect a watershed without some of those people from the very beginning. So I'm thankful to all of those people. I'm thankful that they involved me in this process. I'm really excited to move forward um with it and um protect it and make it better. That was probably my favorite section here because I did have worries and concerns about um if you build it, they will come. But I think that that was probably the most important piece of this document to say, if they're going to come, let's leave it better than we found it. And then, and I'm very excited about that. So thank you all so much.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say thank you to Maeve. Um, uh, I I don't use the trails because, you know, my cruiser bike won't go on the trails. And all of you would make fun of them. But thank you so much for all the hard work. I know you've put endless hours in on this and um Jason and all the community partners. It truly is amazing what what a group of dedicated people can do for our community and benefit all of us. So thank you very much.
Well said. And um, yeah, special thanks. I also want to recognize you, uh, Deb. I know you've uh as a council member, you and Jason both have really um put a lot of time and attention on this. And Deb, you've been with this from the beginning. I I appointed you to the watershed as soon as I came in into this office. I I knew you'd be motivated and you've certainly um proven yourself there and and followed through with this. So thanks for that, Maeve, of course. And um, I see Sean and um and Lance here from Schweitzer. Um, it's been great to see the continued development of the partnership between Schweitzer and the city. Um, you guys have just um continued to really uh step up and and be involved and engaged. And um, share that vision with us about what we can create up there together. And I hope that we can continue on that path as well. Um, you know, I meant to say this during announcements, but I wanted to mention that um Altera, the new owner of Schweitzer. Um, had a a community meeting uh this last Friday and I'm I'm really excited to have met the leadership team there. And I think um, they are um a great partner for Schweitzer. And they they are, have the the right approach of really um investing in and getting behind the local management team um here at Schweitzer. And getting behind the community of Sandpoint. Um, and they they uh, we shared with them a little bit about the vision there and they saw that and they got excited about it. Um, and um, and uh, and the POP club, man, you guys have just like all of the number of you in the audience here. But it's been amazing what POP has created, uh, the Ponderay Peddlers in this community over the last twelve, fifteen years. It's just been phenomenal. It continues to grow uh exponentially, the the positive impact in this community. So um, thank you. And this is a testament to all the hard work of of you uh in particular. But uh, so many people have have contributed to this. The NORTA Club is another really big one. Um, it's amazing to see their growth. Um, and I'm I'm hoping that we can can just, we can just continue with this plan. And uh, keep carrying the vision forward. It's it's a really beautiful one. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I know somebody out here in the audience can verify, but I think the peddlers have been around since two thousand and four. Is that correct, Mike or Susan or? Yeah, okay. So that's a very nice pleasantry for me because my oldest was born in oh four. So now I could never forget. The peddlers and my oldest son, but it's been a very long time.
Thank you for correcting me. Appreciate that. Sorry to undercut you there. All right. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Kyle Schreiber.
Kyle Schreiber, Sandpoint resident, and I just want to say there's a lot to love about this document. And overall, I do encourage the county to adopt it today. Uh, I did have a couple of comments that I wanted to make. Um, I'll be fast. So uh, first off, we need a bike route from the Red Barn to Turn Two Parking. Um, Turn Two Parking is already becoming a problem. It's only going to get worse as more trail users show up. And the more cars that we can keep out of the watershed, the less pollution there is in our water, not just from the cars themselves, but from uh creating bigger and more parking lots. Um, first glance, it appears that we could create a bike lane um up to turn one and then possibly a trail to the parking lot from there. Uh, but once there's a safe route, people will be encouraged to leave their cars down either in town or at the Red Barn and and bike all the way. Um, number two, I would encourage um to not decommission the downhill trail. Uh, I know that the council has wanted to get rid of that trail for a long time, but let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater here. Um, it's hard to believe that it would cause more damage to the watershed to recondition an existing trail than to decommission it. And take excavators to build an entirely new trail. Um, that's from a water quality standpoint, from a wildlife standpoint, and also from a budget standpoint. Um, not to mention that the area that Trail Two-O-One is drawn into right now is slated for logging. Per the timber management plan, and we certainly don't want to see another instance of what happened over at Hayes Gulch. Where um trails that had a lot of time and money put into them got destroyed by logging equipment. Uh, number three, I'd like to see a legally protected access for backcountry skiers. And I touched on this in the last council meeting. Sorry for my disheveled comments. I didn't realize I was going to be allowed to quote on uh comment on something that wasn't an action item. But um, currently, our um only access is across private property and that's at the whim of the property owner. Um, you know, we're not asking for excavators to build us trails. We're not asking for snow cats to groom snow for us. All we're asking for is access and at any moment that uh access could be taken away. So um, if we're going to spend three and a half million dollars on trails, I don't think it's that much to ask to uh spend a nominal amount to legally protect access in perpetuity for winter recreational users.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Appreciate those comments. Very thoughtful.
Lance Badger.
Hello, uh Lance Badger, uh resident of Sandpoint. Um, as a representative of uh Schweitzer Mountain Properties, uh, I just want to lend my support to this whole endeavor. I really support the plan. Um, and I especially want to thank the city, the staff. Um, the participants and the consultants that worked on this from the very beginning. We were brought in. It's been nothing but a collaborative effort and we really look forward to continuing that and seeing this concept to realization. So just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Badger. Appreciate that.
Susan Drumheller.
Hi, I'm Susan Drumheller. I live in the county, but I, we have property here in Sandpoint. Um, and um, yeah, I've been involved in, I've been with the peddlers for a while and I used to be on the board. And I'm really excited to see this happen and I. And I remember talking with you about this idea many, many moons ago, before it was even really on any agenda. So I'm really excited that the watershed crest trail is, that concept is still preserved in the plan. You know, we, we worked really hard to get that Ulieta Point trail built. And that was sort of like the first, you know, piece outside of kind of that Schweitzer Selkirk Recreation District area towards that goal. And so to see it in the plan on the map, even I know it's not the exact alignment, is, was very great to see. And I really like the way that the plan does concentrate most of the trails in one area to protect wildlife corridors, you know, that, and, and the, just the integrity of that watershed and the waterways. I really think that the water quality is a big issue as well. I mean, I'm very passionate about trails and recreation and mountain biking, but I'm also very passionate about water quality. And so I'm, I'm excited to see that. I know there's a lot of details to. And I also want to say that as a property owner in Sandpoint and taxpayer, I would not mind having some of my tax dollars go towards building these trails. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drumheller. Appreciate those comments.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware of anyone else who wishes to speak on this topic. Steve. Oh, my apologies.
That's okay. We would never forget him.
Thanks, Steph. My name's Stephen Meyer. I'm a resident of Sandpoint. And I just want to say that the, what Maeve has worked toward and presented to you is it's a masterpiece. I know, because I've been on the Pondray Peddlers membership since it started 2004. And before then, we were breaking trails. Any rate, I just want to say that the Pondray Peddlers is a very good organization that we have in Sandpoint. We honor the commission that we have to go out and build trails. And I tell you, there's, when you see the trail that is built, there is no problem with water quality. It is so professionally done. And I got to thank Maeve and other people for that. So any rate, I hope that tonight, when you have the opportunity to vote, you vote for adoption of this plan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Meyer. Appreciate those comments. Is that it, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I want to make a comment too, in that, you know, I first brought this to counsel, this concept of watershed crest trail when I was on city council. And at the time, there was, there didn't seem to be anybody, at least on this side of the dais, there wasn't much in favor for it. Nor in city staff. And we had a completely different team, different council, different team at that time. It was just a different time. And, and the concern, and even members of the public, you know, there were peddlers out there, of course, that were on the team immediately, right? But there was a lot of members of the public that the first concern they had was, what about water quality? That's for water. That's why we have that. It's about water. And it took a lot of convincing that, you know, first of all, recognizing that there's other municipalities and there's other public entities around the country that are starting to do this more and more. They're blend, they're merging or blending recreation and water quality or conservation. So there, it took other people doing it first and saying, no, look, that can work. That can be successful. But then it also took an excellent plan and approach. And I cannot commend staff enough for the effort that they've put into doing this right. We didn't just go up there and start haphazardly building a bunch of trails. We really took our time, much to those of us who are bikers, much to our dismay. You know, because we want to just go get it done, right? And, and Steve, I know you're one of them, probably more than anyone. But it, you know, it was staff that really saw, you know, what the right approach here was, which was to, let's take this slow, let's do our due diligence, let's do our study. Let's, let's get the, the management plan, the, the forest management plan done first and make sure that we're protecting species up there, we're protecting water quality and that we're demonstrating, that, that we're demonstrating and acting that, look, that this is our first priority. And once we've got that covered, now we can start looking at how we can layer in recreation here. And, and I know I was, you know, pushing, you know, the whole way and I was one of the impatient ones. So I just really appreciate the leadership of staff for, for taking it slow and doing it right and bringing the community along. And now we have a project, a recreation plan for our watershed that has ubiquitous community support. Everybody's behind this thing. And it, and it's because of, of the leadership of staff that has really kind of changed hearts and minds about how we can do this right. So thank you, staff. Excellent work. And with that, counsel, any other comments or questions? I'm going to entertain the motion to approve the resolution adopting the Little Sand Creek Watershed Recreation Plan.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? So be a roll call vote.
Yes.
Counselor Welk. Counselor Groth.
Yes.
Counselor McAllister.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Sprowl.
Yes.
Motion passes. Yeah, I know.
Give yourself a hand.
We normally don't allow that, but. For the final item under all business this evening, thank you for joining us again, Mr. Welker. Counselor Welker. Counsel will consider award of a contract for right-of-way acquisition services for the Great Northern Road Project. Now you have the Florida Construction Manager, Eric Bush. He's sporting a blazer for us this evening.
Just for you.
Yeah.
Right-of-way acquisition is going to sound boring after Maeve's patient on watershed, but that's okay. If I can just get my screen shared. All right, so some of this will sound a little bit familiar to you guys. I presented to you in February regarding our construction design efforts with JUB. And I'm happy to report JUB's cruising along, they're on schedule. Everything's going really good with the design phase. What I have in front of you tonight is for right-of-way acquisition. And I'll give you a little bit of a rundown on right-of-way acquisition. But first, let me just give a little bit more background on Great Northern for a second, too. So some of this I talked about back in February, but just really quickly. In 2010, this project was identified as, you know, really high importance to the city. In 21, JUB completed a feasibility study that we discussed in February. And we subsequently awarded them a contract for the rest of the engineering services. Here we are today in May, June now, and we have a right-of-way acquisition contract. And what this is for is our, if you can look, see this layout, which you've seen before, woodland drives on the north side is on the right-hand side of your paper and Baldy Mountain Road is on the left-hand side of your screen there, just to kind of orient you. Our extents and our footprint for our realignment of Great Northern that you can see on the top part of this is quite a bit wider than the existing road. So because of that, we need to acquire additional land adjacent to this corridor from south to north, north to south, whichever way you want to look at it. And this next drawing, which is a little bit more crude, I apologize for that. But if you can see the kind of orangish lines on the background of the screen there, those are all the private properties that are adjacent to Great Northern. Some are privately owned, some are publicly owned, some are owned by the railroad. So the majority of these acquisitions that we need to undertake right now are privately owned. But we'll have some correspondence with Bonner County as well as the railroad. And we've already started some of this correspondence with some landowners and other ones we have not discussed with yet. That, that will start shortly after the award of this contract, if it's awarded. So our intent here is to acquire the additional land we need for the footprint of our road. Certainly not taking any more than is required and, you know, being good neighbors to all of these landowners, whether they're residents, business owners, Bonner County, whoever. What Epic Land Solutions is going to help us with is the actual legal A's, the, the real estate part of that project. So they'll be looking at title review, appraisals, appraisal review, property acquisition, of course, and closing and post-acquisition activities, anything that might need to be kind of wrapped up at the end of the project. So Epic Land Solutions will basically be our lead point for these negotiation services. I'll be involved, of course, Jennifer will be involved at certain times. But primarily, the intent is to let Epic Land Solutions handle this because it's quite a big undertaking. We have 18 or 19 parcels that we need to acquire pieces of. So as you can imagine, there's a lot of work that has to go in place with each of those. I think it's 17 specific landowners that, you know, that we need to approach, negotiate with, and ultimately come to a consensus on what we need and how we can work best together. And as far as our schedule goes, you all have seen this schedule as well. But there's two things highlighted in red on here, on the left-hand side by my cursor. That's where we are right now, starting right-of-way acquisition and 2025 end of right-of-way acquisition. So we hope that between now and the start of '25, we'll have this process wrapped up. We estimate about a year and a half. And that's what Epic Land Solutions estimate as well to take care of this. But of course, things can come up, you know, we might potentially be delayed here or there if there's some sort of pickup that we undertake. But we will be updating councils throughout this process. Of course, when it comes to acquisition time, we will be updating council and asking for council approval at that time. But our hope is that by 2025, we'll be wrapped up with this and that will not impact any of our construction phasing or timing or anything like that. We don't foresee that it will. But as for right now, we're just, you know, kind of planning for all potential pitfalls. So with that being said, I hope I have explained this well enough. And if I haven't, I am happy to stand for any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions? All right, thank you.
Appreciate it moving forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good work. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks. Madam Clerk, is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Kyle Schreiber.
Kyle Schreiber, Sandpoint resident, still trying to save a tree, so hopefully this works. Thanks for allowing me to share my point of view on this. I realize it's basically a done deal, but I was really struck by the contrast between this item and an item on last meeting's agenda. Last meeting, we told the property owner that he must give a substantial portion of his property to the city with no compensation and also pay thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars for the infrastructure improvements that, on that gifted land. This agenda item, we're doing the polar opposite. We are telling landowners along a different road, don't worry, the taxpayers will pay for that infrastructure. And not only that, but we will pay you for the land that we have to use for that infrastructure. And this is to the tune of millions of dollars. And yes, I'm aware of the Urban Renewal Agency and their mandates. What I find odd is that in mayor, your round, December roundtable article, you announce, and I quote, "Extending the city services is only cost-effective when there is sufficient density to pay for it. Therefore, future extension of services will favor urbanized development like multifamily attached housing and mixed-use commercial rather than less dense, single-family developments." And to be clear, that's a policy I absolutely agree with. So perhaps there's some undisclosed vision for Great Northern that I'm not aware of. Because all I have to go off of is what the landowners themselves have disclosed. And what I found on Zero Points website is that their plan is warehouse space. You know, we were told that rerouting the road to the east creates a safer railroad crossing, even though in figure 10 of the transportation plan doesn't show a single accident at that intersection. But it is a huge benefit to the Silver Wing Development, which is a gated community of single-family homes that cater to private jet owners. So I just want to close by saying I agree with the mayor. The city's budget is like watering your garden. And so for $18 million, what are we growing? Thanks.
Thanks for those comments, Mr. Schreiber. Appreciate that. Madam Clerk?
I don't believe anyone else wishes to speak on this topic, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Jennifer, I don't know if you can speak to this or not, but you know, I think back when the Urban Renewal Agency was created for the northern area and really the primary goal was to rebuild Great Northern with the understanding that that was going to be the primary commercial truck route, north to south, preferred over Boyer. And that, that would be used by business growth that was anticipated along the Great Northern Corridor itself, as well as along Baldy, along Division, et cetera. More recently, in their urban area transportation plan that was recently approved, we have included a vision for extension of Baldy to connect to Highway Two, south of Fifth Avenue, or north of Fifth Avenue, excuse me. So that was kind of, kind of new, kind of since the creation of the northern urban area, that northern urban renewal district. And I don't know if, if you can speak to that, Jennifer, but you know, I think Mr. Schreiber brings up a reasonable point that, that could be addressed to the council. Does that change, you know, with, you know, both of these are massive projects? I mean, we're talking, you know, $18 million project for Great Northern. We're talking probably a $22 million or something project for the extension of Baldy to connect to Highway Two. Does, you know, I'm, I'm thinking back through the, you know, as I recall in the urban area transportation plan, you know, we were considering both, you know, both and. But you know, it, it kind of begs the question, I think philosophically, and I wish Amanda was here because she, she knows that plan better than anybody. But you know, I just wonder if extension, connection of Baldy to Highway Two would, you know, relieve that need for, for that expansion of Great Northern. And I don't know if you can speak to that or not, but I invite you to if you.
I think I can make a couple of comments on it.
Thank you.
So you are correct, Mr. Mayor, that the Great Northern project, the rebuild, the realignment of Great Northern was what the urban, the urban renewal district was specifically created for. So the tax increment collected in the northern urban renewal district, it's been building up a budget balance for this very expensive endeavor. The reason I believe that Great Northern was considered the priority project for the city at the time it was identified as well as ultimately the northern district created was, number one, it's a failing road. We have done multiple repairs on Great Northern. And ultimately, we've had some to repair catastrophic failure of that. So, and that continues to be an issue in, in that particular area with one of the most significant issues at Great Northern that then relates to the businesses developing along that corridor is the stormwater issues. And so with the reconstruction of Great Northern, that includes putting in effective stormwater management that frankly doesn't exist there, as well as creating ped bike connectivity along that corridor where we have had a fatality in not so long a time ago with members of the public, I believe, who were walking on a lunch hour on that corridor. So there is no safe pedestrian bike connectivity along that corridor. And it's becoming a growing, increasing corridor for access to Schweitzer. So from an economic development standpoint, that connectivity with Great Northern up to Schweitzer is critical. In that northern area as well, we are seeing it as our most significant area of growth for residential development, but specifically along Great but specifically along Great Northern. Mr. Schreiber is correct, you're not seeing residential development on there because that is zoned an industrial area. And as you will recall from our Leland study, there was a recommendation that we need to protect that residential area for job growth and, and company growth for good-paying jobs in this community. So it's, it's, it's not primarily serving residential per se within the city. It's that economic connector, and it's that economic connector from the standpoint of giving to Schweitzer, but it's an economic connector in terms of supporting access to industrial businesses and growth that is occurring along the corridor. It has been an area where we have seen very slow development growth, and we have had multiple meetings. I know, Mr. Mayor, you and I have been involved in a number of those meetings the Economic Development Corporation with businesses looking at relocating or expanding in this community, particularly focused on manufacturing and aerospace because of the proximity to the airport. And it has not penciled for them to either build something new or expand their business primarily due to the drainage, drainage issues along that corridor, the costs to build up. And so that you can actually construct a facility on the property along Great Northern has been the biggest barrier to development along that corridor. And that was another reason why this is an urban renewal project identified by the creation of a Northern Urban Renewal Agency. So hopefully I've answered your question.
That was great, thank you, appreciate that. Counsel, any, well, how about this? How about we entertain a motion for approval of the resolution, I'm sorry, for the Resolution for Professional Consultant Services Agreement with Epic Land Solutions, Inc., City Agreement A twenty-three dash twenty-four ten dash twelve, is there a motion?
No, moved.
Okay.
They moved and seconded, any further discussion? So be a real call vote.
Yeah, just in the four years I've been on P and Z and now City Council, I think I've been involved with approval for around a hundred and seventy-eight dwelling units along Woodland up there between the Samuelson Development, which is well underway now, and the, I'm forgetting the name of the subdivisions across the street from Samuelson. But just the idea that, you know, as a cycling advocate myself, having one of the, the components that really I'm excited about with the division project, or sorry, the GN project is the detached bike lane, and I really hope, I know there's been concerns about inflated costs and budgets, but from my perspective, that's a real highlight of that concept. So having a detached bike lane, also that's one of the most popular routes for cyclists to get out of Sandpoint, road bikers, mountain bikers getting to the trails in the watershed. You see, it's, it's quite terrifying cycling on GN Road right now. So getting the detached bike lane there, connecting the almost two hundred in just the last three, four years, new housing units that have gone in along Woodland to town via a bike route, Boyer's not an optimal bike route right now. Also GN is the more direct route into town for those, those people. So it's in response to some of your concerns, Kyle, like there are hundreds of new homes going in along Woodland. And to Jennifer's point, the, the, the fact that this might stimulate or make it a little bit more attractive for some of that industrial and commercial development we envision along GN Road. I think this is a really important project, and it's why the Sura was created, so.
Yeah, appreciate those comments, Counselor. And you know, the reality is, is this is one of two of the city's streets, north to south.
Yeah.
So, you know, all we, yeah.
One other comment to that end, because I, I think that Counselor Welker brings up a good point is, keep in mind the purpose of an urban renewal district is for those who aren't as familiar with urban renewal in Idaho. It's, and coming from other areas, it's like a TIF that is known in other areas. So when we're looking at urban re-
Which is tax increment financing.
When we're looking at a project like this, it is actually development is paying for this project. So when urban renewal is created, we have the base tax increment for what it is at the time the district is created, and then as development is occurring. So as Counselor Welker's pointed, a number of residential developments in that area, industrial improvements. It's actually similarly when somebody's doing a development and is paying for infrastructure with urban renewal financing, and it's actually development paying for that project as well.
Thank you for those comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I have a question, so I don't remember the boundaries, but this is the northern district, correct? This part of the Sura. So we have all the stuff going in at UVI, and that is not part of the northern district.
That's correct.
Okay, where does the northern district start? Because my question would be, and Jason unknowingly kind of brought it up, and this was my thought process, is the, the separated path along Boyer stops because there's some, some areas that need acquisition there. And it may be because that's outside of Sura, but that has been something talked about since before you were even here, finishing that connection. I think that connection, although maybe outside this conversation, we maybe need to bring that to the forefront once University of Idaho is completed. Those people are going to want a direct route down north Boyer to the roundabout and up to the mountain also. So I don't know how that plays into Sura, I think it's all outside of Sura.
It's all outside of Sura, the northern district, so I pull up the map, but essentially the boundary is going to be north of Baldy. It is west of Boyer, and then to Great Northern, including Great Northern up to Woodland is essentially.
We can't just include the street of Boyer, darn. Right down the middle, right?
And we have included matching funds for a grant to extend that pathway on North Boyer, and we have submitted at least two grant applications in recent years funding for completion of that pathway, so it hasn't dropped off. Our priority list of pathways, in fact, it's still up at the top. It's just trying to secure the funding for that again because it is outside of the.
Okay, okay. Sorry for the tangent, fellow counselors.
Yep, that's, there are a few areas where it goes south of, oh, never mind. Any question answering, we don't need to, yeah.
I don't need that.
Okay, anyways. Are we good? Got a motion in a second, can we vote?
Counsel McAllister, yes. Counsel Rule?
Yes.
Counsel Sprow?
Yes.
Counsel Grove?
Yes.
Counsel Walker?
Yes.
Counsel Dick?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. So I don't feel we need a recess, do we? Is anyone, is everyone good? We'll say, we'll say three minutes, three-minute recess. Thank you. All right, this meeting is now reconvened at six fifty-one-ish PM. And the first item under new business is, let's see, this, yeah, is consideration of amendments to the city's salary administration policy. I'll now yield the floor to City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To my left for this item, our next item and our third item, also I have Isis Ellison, for those who haven't met her, she is our HR risk manager. And in the future on these items, you would probably not see me as the primary presenter or necessarily the lead on the agenda item at all. Now ISIS has been with us about five weeks.
Yes, five weeks.
And so it wasn't really fair to throw her in the mix of all of this. And, and she's doing a great job for us and working on a number of different things. But she was, she's new to, to some of our benchmarking and, and things like that. However, ISIS has been the lead on our salary administration policy. And it won't apply as much to this item, but our next agenda items, of course, Mayor and Council are familiar with Sarah Lynn's, our Treasurer Finance Director. So when we're talking about things that impact our dollars, we are never having those conversations without Sarah in my office and a significant part of those conversations. So for questions, all three of us are up here, and just know, none of these next three items has been an isolated project of mine. You just have me as the lead on these. Before you tonight are some proposed amendments to our salary administration policy. And I would say actually it was ISIS who prepared all of these amendments. But in a summary, what we included in this, and I'm just going to go to the first page, our adopted salary administration policy reflects references in Appendix A and Appendix B, which are our salary schedules for general salary schedule and our police salary schedule. And we change these every year as part of our budgeting process when we are doing COLAs, or if we're, we're looking at adding new positions and putting it on our scale. So our first change to the salary administration policy includes a reference to salary structures, ranges and schedules that are part of our annual budget process, i.e. the newest adopted one. Because we've had a salary scale that we've had out on our reference page for staff, but if you actually go look at the policy, it's referencing a several years old salary policy and schedule. Our other change to this policy is referencing a change from our, from a human resources director to human resources HR manager. And that is ISIS's current title. And just to clarify, ISIS is our chief in charge of human resources. But it is reflecting the title and how it fits in our structure. Our directors are at division head levels, and this position isn't a division head, but it is our primary position in charge of HR and risk management. There was also some clarifications and circumstances where a step increase is considered and, and approved related to an employee promotion, some clarification on verbiage related to promotion, reclassification and transfers. Neither of these things was intended to be a change from what our existing policy is, but further clarification of it. And finally, clarification under when and what circumstances specialty pay is in effect. And then there were some minor verbiage and grammatical changes that ISIS cotton made as well. So we are available for any questions counsel may have, but generally this is a cleanup of the policy, and that's why we're not going into detail. It's not an overhaul of the policy as currently adopted.
Counsel, any questions on that?
No questions, just a, a welcome to Sandpoint, welcome to here. Thank you for taking, taking us on and taking a risk with us, being our risk manager. The cleanup was really overdue, and it read much, much cleaner. So I appreciate your eyes on the details.
All right, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone who would like to comment on this matter from the public?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. In that case, would entertain a motion for approval of the resolution amending City of Sandpoint salary administration policy, is there a motion?
No, moved.
Seconded.
Then moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counsel Sprow?
Yes.
Counsel Walker?
Yes.
Sir Dick?
Yes.
Counsel McAllister?
Yes.
Counsel Rule?
Yes.
Counsel Grove?
Yes.
Motion passes, next council will consider updates to the city's grade chart and police and general salary schedules to take effect on July first, I'll now yield the floor again to City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and once again, I have my team along with me, hopefully this is. I have this and the next agenda item up, so hopefully I'm clicking on the right one. Sorry, bear with me just a second. I have several windows open. Hang on just one second, sorry. This is what happens when I have three in a row. Getting them all in the right window so I can pull them up. Okay. Here we go. This item before you for consideration is updates to the city's grade chart and police and general salary schedules based on comprehensive benchmarking analysis. Each year, in accordance with our salary administration policy as adopted, and now with small minor edits too as adopted, we conduct an annual benchmarking of all of our employee positions across all of our groups at the city with other cities with similar positions in North Idaho and our Region One, in Region Two, which extends down to Moscow and Lewiston, and then we cross over a bit in Region Two, which is a Region Two seven included over into Washington with Pullman, because Moscow Pullman as their benchmarking salaries, you see the commonality between the two of those. We subscribe to a service called the Northwest Data Exchange Benchmarking Study, and it's administered through Ameribin Human Resource Consulting, and we have gone through this process for about the last ten, twelve years where we have gotten, gotten this data. And typically, we're doing benchmarking as a part of our annual budgeting process. And so what we're doing is looking at our positions, how they compare to others, how they compare within our grade chart with responsibilities. And it informs where we're going in addition to the economy and looking at CPI and some other factors, where we're going in our budgeting process with a COLA in our budget the next year, if there will be one included. But it also makes sure that we're on track with what our market is, the market that we're hiring from, the market that we lose employees to. And so when we are benchmarking, we are benchmarking against other governments that are in their current fiscal year. So it's not a look ahead to what they're doing next year, that's what we anticipate with our COLA. It's looking at where we are right now as compared to other governments. We did a very detailed analysis this year, and actually I led the review because I've been here obviously longer than ISIS, and am most familiar with all of our different positions through our divisions of our positions. How, how do they look in our grade chart, and are we really comparing with other agencies comparable positions? The results of this analysis that we worked on for about two and a half weeks are, if we look up and down our grade chart, we currently as compared to other governments in our region are plus or minus eight percent of the benchmarks in our general salary schedule. Our compensation policy, which I know you all reviewed as part of our last item, says that our compensation goal is to be plus or minus five percent in our benchmarks. We had talked about a month ago when we had done a review, we knew we were out of market from our initial analysis discussion we had had with other agencies. And we were looking and had suggested to counsel at that meeting where we were making a change with police, that we were probably going to be coming back with a change to our general schedules and police schedules, probably a four percent grade adjustment because we felt we were out of alignment. It wasn't until we got through this full review that we could really assess where we were. As a result of where we are, we are recommending that we do a four percent scale adjustment to the city's general salary schedule, so that would be all positions. That's a whole movement of our scale effective July first, twenty twenty-three. And we are recommending an implementation date of this year in July as opposed to our next fiscal year of October. as opposed to our next fiscal year of October 1st. Because number one, we have salary savings due to turnover and delay of being able to hire employees. And we are experiencing turnover and loss of employees right now because of the market. We have lost a number of employees over the last two months to other jurisdictions because we are out of alignment with the market. And in order to retain our very talented workforce and to fill some open positions, we need to get back into the market so that we are effectively compete completing, competing. In addition, when we are doing this analysis, both looking at the market and then we're looking at what are our position duties and how are they relative to one another in our grade chart? We have from time to time recommendations in our annual budget of grade adjustments that need to occur. Before you tonight, we are requesting consideration for great adjustments for several of our positions. In fact, I would tell you these are, this is the most significant number of great adjustments that we have had in my time with the city. And I don't think we've had great adjustments at this level, probably in the last decade plus. But again, this is getting market driven by what's happening. And also as we are growing as a city and looking at responsibilities with some of our personnel. There are warranted changes within our grade system. So you will see a number of positions that we've also included in your packet that we are recommending be reclassed to a different grade. I'll explain how that works when we get into the salary schedule a little bit ahead. We also did a full analysis in addition to our general grade chart. This also included a full benchmark analysis of all of our police positions. We had initially told you that we thought we, we did a two percent adjustment, knowing we had that available budget. We knew there was going to be to be another adjustment. But as we went through and did our detailed review, what we told you, we thought might be a four percent adjustment for our police officers specifically, a six percent adjustment is needed on top of the two percent that we already did to get back into market. We are with our corporal and our police sergeant levels and some of our police positions are not on our police salary schedule, they're on our general salary schedule. When we got out of our police officer group, the four percent scale adjustment was appropriate. However, when we're now making a six percent scale adjustment, we're pushing up into our command staff. And there is relation in our grade chart, both the general grade chart as well as our police grade chart between all of our different grade levels. So you will see that we are recommending a collapse. And I'll show you that here in a second in our corporal positions as well as our police sergeant positions because we're pushing up here and they all need to stay relevant to one another. And it didn't warrant a six percent grade adjustment with the corporals and sergeants again. I've included in your packet, the updated grade chart, which reflects our recommended grade changes. We highlighted all of those in yellow so you can see where those are included. Incidentally, as noted in the salary policy, we're recommending that the grade chart be referenced, the grade chart that is adopted as part of our budgeting process. The grade chart that you are seeing in front of you now will be the same grade chart. That will move through our budget process as well. So we've had previous years where we have had changes, done some regrading, done some re-titling of positions and so personnel came first and then the rest of the budget. We're following that same process this year. So you won't see a revised grade chart coming through with the budget. This is what we would propose to be included in the adopted, as our adopted grade chart for next year. I want to talk a little bit about what regrading means. And I'm just going to give an example here at like a level seventeen. Since Cory's not here, I'm going to pull him out and explain the way a grading would work. Our police chief, he's been with us for a long period of time. At a grade seventeen, he's at our maximum level here at trying to make my pointer move. So sorry, so I can show you that my finger acting out here on me today. All right, I'm not going to get the mouse to move. It's going to be a grade seventeen, our maximum step of a fifteen. We're proposing that he be re-graded, our police chief. It's not about the individual, it's about the position to a grade level eighteen. So when you look at our seventeen, that at that grade level, it's sixty-four thirty-two. Where the position would come in on a grade eighteen would be at a step nine. So we reclassify them into a new grade system. They don't go lower, but they're not getting a huge jump as a result of regrading typically. Especially when we're doing a single grade, it becomes more challenging if we've got larger grade jumps. And really our only position that we have that with is the permit tech, the rest are moving up a single grade. It's usually with that regrading, it's anywhere from twenty-five cents to seventy-five cents. But it gives them room in the position where they're going to grow over to, if that makes sense. So we're not doing a four percent. And then on top of that, there's a five dollar increase or something else. It's going to be a small increase as a result of the regrading. But over time, they're going to have opportunity to move up more steps as a result of the regrading.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Jennifer, I'm a little confused just there. How, how do they have opportunities to move up more steps as a result of regrading? Or did I understand that you're moving down in your steps as you're regraded? So, so the, let's, I, I don't actually know, sorry to say, our permit technician personally, but a permit technician who let's say is at the central point, step, sorry, step six, moving from seven to ten grade. If they remained at step six, they'd go from twenty-two sixty-seven to twenty-seven seventy-eight, is that correct?
No. ISIS, do you want to jumping?
But so what, what would be happening, what would be happening with this adjustment? They're moving up from seven to ten, but they're moving down on the longevity scale.
Okay, let's, let's take your permit tech example and saw our permit tech. That's our one position that's jumping more than a, that is jumping more than a single grade. So let's say our permit tech as it is today is a grade seven, step three.
Step three.
And they're going to a ten.
Right.
So if they are a grade seven, step three, they're sitting right here.
Got it.
They're going to go up to a grade ten.
But start over at one.
We are one significant jump, they're going to start at a one to get to the right grade. But you can see that there is a pay increase associated with moving to the higher grade.
Okay. But you kind of start over on the scale.
Yeah, now they can go laterally, they can continue to increase.
No, is this, again, apologies and kind of trying to familiarize myself with all this. Is the scale, the horizontal scale, is that based on longevity alone?
Yes, and performance, longevity and performance, so.
But presumably a, an employee here fifteen years or more should be a scale, column fifteen on the scale, is that?
Yes, we have a fair number of employees that are at that end of the scale.
So that's central point, if somebody's currently, if somebody moving up in the grade scale is currently beyond that central point, do they get bumped back to the central point or all the way back to one? I feel like it's a video game and there's levels, you get, you have started at the beginning of the game when you just, just that level.
Of the what step that they're in, they've been re-graded. So they're going to go to their higher grade. You look at what the compensation is in the step. So let's just take a ten.
Got it.
Going to an eleven. And as soon as I do this, my mouse will put working. So I'm at a, a grade ten, I'm at a step seven. So I'm at this twenty-eight thirty-five.
Okay, so they're going to get a fifty-four cent raise, correct? Go down to.
To go to a, let's say we're moving it to an eleven. They are going to go to
Five.
Eight eighty-nine.
Fifty-four cent raise.
Yes.
Gotcha. But now in, in the next, in the coming years, they're going to be experiencing quite a bit more than they would have if they had been down at the lower level. Okay.
Okay.
No, really like.
Wow, as an econ guy, I thought you would have gotten it like that.
Boss mode.
You got it. I taught this in economics class, no, this is totally new to me.
Guy though.
I'm a numbers guy and now I understand the numbers.
To government compensation systems one oh one.
I guess I've just seen it so many times now.
Yeah. And so Jennifer, maybe you can explain, so for somebody who's been here twenty-five years and let's say they hit step fifteen.
Yeah.
Five years ago, what, what is, what is the, how? What are their future prospects? How does it look for them? Because if their position is graded at, let's say a twelve, they, they don't necessarily get graded out. I mean, we're doing this today, but this is fairly unusual, right?
So you're hired for a position and what your position is, there may be opportunities. We have opportunities within our structure. If you look at the compensation policy, some of our positions have advancement opportunities. And we can talk about that maybe a little, let's talk about that on the police system. Because we want to look at that one too, and I think that's a good example to use. Other, I'll just use my position for an example. I'm hired as a city administrator, there isn't another position, it's only that position. If I reach my maximum step, it just is what it is. I've reached the maximum of my time and experience with the city. When we do colas, colas then affect our positions within the city, but there's not an advancement opportunity beyond the cola. And we do have a number of employees who actually are at that maximum step. And a few of those are in positions that the market says should be re-graded. So now instead of being maxed out, we have some employees who have opportunities for growth that are long-term employees that weren't otherwise going to have those. But this isn't a deal of you permanently move through the system and keep going to a higher level. It's what position you're in and what we are awarding, which is consistent with. This is a typical government salary structure. You are rewarding people for experience and time in the organization and in the community. Because we should be hiring them in with knowledge to do their job and absolutely needing all of the qualifications to do their jobs. But learning our system, the community, how we function, you're rewarding that over time. That's a typical government system, whether it be at local government, state government or federal. This is kind of how we work as opposed to the private system. In terms of where we hire people in, I'll go back to our salary policy. Again, where our system is designed that you're hiring people at the low end of the range and then rewarding experience. We run into cases where the market is really high and it's crazy. And sometimes we're having to hire in at a higher market point to even compete with what's happening in the industry. That's our central point. The way that our system used to work before we changed it in twenty seventeen is you used to have this step system up to the central point. And then when you got past it, we, we were about rewarding performance. And so we had a range and you can move within that range. And the idea was it would vary based on performance with individual employees where they would move in that range. That's a great ideal, that never works in a system. This is, and it didn't in ours either. What I found when I came here and looked at our whole system is I'm, why are these, we would have people were moving up within a range, but trying to leave them room to grow. So we might move them up like literally two cents. And then I would have department heads that are calling around, what are you doing for your people? What are you doing? And so the whole notion of how that system worked, it didn't really work the way that it was designed. This creates predictability for our employees on room for growth. It helps us with recruitment and you can grow. And our employees are always in our system as we've adopted it. If you're eligible for a step increase because you meet our performance standards, you've had your review done. That is always included in our budget in a given year. We may have a year we're not doing colas. It hasn't happened in recent years, I don't think in my time here at all. But it has happened in years past where there was no colas, but we always budget, even if there wasn't one, that you would still be able to move through your steps. But again, with the way market's growing, cost is going, we have been doing colas for many years. We've done a couple of grade adjustments. We've done them two different times since I have been here. We did one in twenty seventeen and that's referenced here on your chart. So you can see where we've got colas, those are your adjustments that are referred to. But you can see April of twenty seventeen, we did something similar to what you're considering tonight. A three percent scale adjustment. Back in twenty seventeen, we number one overhauled that performance pay philosophy that we had that wasn't really working. But we also did a wholesale scale adjustment because historically we were benchmarking to salaries all up and down the state. And that's not our market, our market is the north end of the state. So when we took our correct market, that resulted in us doing a scale adjustment. So it was the same type of thing, only now it's really growth that's happening in our market, driving it this year. And if you'll recall, last year, we also did a scale adjustment in the spring because the market was moving on us. And I know all of you in the private industries understand the market challenges too. So we've all been kind of chasing it. We are typically talking with other cities, we're getting additional benchmarking information. Council President and I are headed down to Boise in a couple of weeks for the Association of Idaho Cities Conference. And that starts out for me with a meeting of city administrators and managers up in the state. And we're all working on budgets and we're typically talking about what we're doing with colas. So I've been really proud of the fact that we've been really good judges of where the market's going and our been adequate. This last year, we had cities make a bunch of changes with positions because of all the craziness that's happened in the markets right at the last minute. So when we thought we were going to be good with our cola, people made changes last minute going into their budget year and we got behind. And that's why we're recommending that we need to do a market adjustment now and not wait for next fiscal year. Again, what we anticipate happening in the future, that's our cola. And just to give you a preview of our budget that will be coming to you next month. We've included a two percent cola for all of our position, January first. So I said I would talk about where we have promotional opportunities. So I'm going to do that here on specifically the police scale. Where we also have promotional opportunities on the general, on our general salary schedule is is primarily in our utilities area. And you can see our priorities in our, in our compensation policy reflected here on the police salary schedule as well. So we hire in a new police officer, a recruit, police officer one. They're going through basic, they're getting their years of experience. But when they get intermediate certification, that's when, and that takes time as well as that's going to be education and testing associated with that as well. They do that same kind of promotional thing that we do with the grade adjustment where they go up to an intermediate. So that doesn't mean they're starting back at one. We look at where they are on the scale because we're not reducing pay. We're looking at where's their next move on the scale and they continue to move up. And then we're awarding. And then we're awarding advancement for advanced certification and master certification. So police charts a good one to look at where we are allowing employees who are in. One grade level to move upgrade levels because we have advancement built in for that specific type of position. Um, again, you what you see here referenced is we're rewarding time here and performance. And we are awarding advanced education and knowledge. The same thing is true on our general salary scale with our utility operators. They have the opportunity to move up in advancement opportunities based on time here, performance. And licensing, which is required for operation of our plants and our distribution system. And that's in accordance with your adopted strategic plan, where we said we're gonna invest in employee training. And development, and significantly, since we adopted that first strategic plan in twenty seventeen. Uh, we have given more advancement opportunities for employees. We have awarded based on. Education, licensing, and development opportunities, and we budget every year. Throughout the organization at all levels for training and education for our employees, and that was a council direction. Um, I mentioned that in the initial um. Presentation that we had a salary collapse with our corporate and sergeants. So you'll notice here, we have a grade seven and we have a grade nine. You don't have a six and an eight. We've eliminated those. And collapsed those, so um intermediate would be um. For somebody who's promoted to a corporal, for example, and they have their immediate intermediate. Um, certificate, they go up to a. Five. And if it requires them getting advanced certification to move into step six and above. It used to be with intermediate, we had a grade six, but again, we had to collapse that up. Um, because of moving the police officers up the six percent. Did I miss anything? We are here to answer any questions, but this, I can tell you this year. Um, this has been a very detailed review. That uh I've done all the benchmarking myself this time around. Sarah has been very involved and did initial reviews for me. And Cassidy was helping. Isis and I have gone over this in detail and discussed all of the grade changes. We were in a mad scramble on Monday, which is why your packet posted late. When um my weekend calculation showed. And Sarah got my message late Sun- Sunday afternoon, and Corey, I don't think we're gonna be in the right spot with our officers. And now we better talk about corporals and sergeants. So Monday was Isis. Uh, uh, Corey, Sarah, and myself all sitting down and figuring out, how does this work? How does this make sense? What can we afford? And how do we get adjustments in our system where we can keep our talented employees recruit? And better compete with the market around this.
Excellent. Council, any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. I want this to be taken with consideration and a grain of salt, cuz I do know how much work and detail, and I I want to move forward with this. The, I ju- I disagree with that level thirteen. I think that the two positions, the. The clerk and wastewater treatment, I I think that they should be up to that fourteen. Also, the specialty hours for our cops, I. Fifty cents is no longer relevant, like, I I. All these folks that we're talking about are all here. Because they're professional and they're passionate for our community. And any amount of extra money that we, it's not extra money, it's earned and deserved money. But I I think that at some point in time, we should look at the specialty hour. And. And revise that to greater than fifty cents, that we should start looking at dollars, not cents. Cuz all of, all of these individuals deserve and have earned that. And again, I want this, if we can make some changes tonight, that is just my thoughts and opinions. I am not gonna be sanding the gears to not allow this to move forward, cuz I want this for all of our people.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question, Jennifer? What benchmarking did you do in terms of those specialty hourly add-ons? Or is that standard in other municipalities that you looked at?
Uh, it's. It's not as common in other municipalities that is in a few. Um, and we just adopted these changes with specialty pay. Um, only a few years back when we were addressing those opportunities here. And um in our streets department as well as licensing in our water wastewater group. So I realize it is. On its face value, it doesn't look like a significant amount in hourly pay. Um, what I would urge the council to consider is you're looking at a compensation system as a whole. Um, so you've got specialty pay on top of steps related to one another. It's an internal and an external equity. Um, and then we're building colas into this, so. And the challenge with all of this is um. Paying our employees fairly and what they deserve and valuing all of our employees. And balancing that on the other side with the what we can afford in our budget. I will tell you that these changes in police. Um, the impact on our general fund, um, year over year is over a quarter of a million dollars. Um, this is significant, so I know when you get looking at fifty cents, that doesn't seem significant. But when you're adding that with, you might be getting specialty pay, you may have a cola in a year, you have a step opportunity. Our compensation system is benchmarked against others is fair. I would also caution against identifying any specific positions. Um, this has been benchmarked equitably and fairly for every single position across the organization. We could debate all of these. Is another city any position doing exactly what our position is doing? It is the preponderance of the duties, it's the relativity of responsibility to other positions. It's benchmarking against other agencies. It's a really complex, complicated compensation structure. And um, we value all of our employees with this. Uh, and, but we have to be fair and equitable, and that is in line with our strategic planning. And from day one that I have been here and I have reworked benefit structures, employment structures. We have tweaked this system and improved it. My professional and personal commitment to our employees is that we would be fair and equitable. And I represent to you tonight with this. These are fair and equitable changes, and we could debate them all, and everyone's got personal opinions about who they might know. Or what they think they do in their position compared to someone else. But we spent a lot of time looking into this, and I feel I can look every employee here in the city in the face. Every single one and say, you're valued. What you do at this organization was considered, and it is equitable with what we've done with everyone else. And it doesn't mean that you won't have great changes next year because we have them pop up from time to time. But you've gotta be careful at looking at specific positions and not others because you're looking at a system. And they all have to be looked at the same way, or someone isn't being treated fairly.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I just would like to say that I I really appreciate Sarah and Isis and your work on this because I know how difficult benchmarking can be. And so, in my opinion, yes, certainly, if we value everybody, Madam Clerk, we value her highly. Um, but the reality is to be fair and equitable to everybody. And so my, in my humble opinion, I think deferring to the experts who presented this and spent hours and hours and days on it. That's the information that we should, that we should accept.
Yeah, yeah. Joel, uh, I I agree with Councilwoman McAllister, and I'm hopeful that some of these um great adjustments. And then the overall four percent um increase will help attract and retain some of the staff that we're lacking currently. With recent, you know, departures from the city and some long-time openings that we've had, and that. Those, you know, that incentive of the extra pay and the, you know, possibility for advancement will relieve some of the. The workload that our staff currently faces. So this overall, I think, is a really fantastic thing. And Jennifer, I really think you just did an amazing job looking at all of our comparable cities and making sure that we're fair and equitable. Within our city, but also within the region, uh, cuz it's super important that we attract and retain this this talent. And just knowing what the private sector's done in the last few years in terms of taking talent away from cities, it's it's. I think it's so crucial that we're, we're considering this right now, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment that I've been through the process many, many times, and it continues to grow and change. And it's not just this one year, but um Jennifer has diligently looked at. And tried to to move everybody into a space where they, you know, deserve to be, so um I trust the system. And it's a lot of numbers and a lot of work, so um I'm not gonna pull out one little Jenga. And have the whole thing come crashing down. It's like dominoes.
Yeah. All right, anything else?
Nothing else. It's already been said.
Okay, Madam Clerk, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I would entertain a motion for approval of the resolution amending the city's grade chart and police and general salary schedules effective July first, two thousand twenty-three. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
They moved and seconded. There's not any further discussion. This will be a real call vote.
Council group.
Absolutely, yes.
Council rocker.
Yes.
Council dick.
Yes.
Council rule.
Yes.
Council sprawl.
Yes.
Council McCaus.
Uh, yes, looking at our police officers, yes.
They're smiling back there, that's good.
Motion passes. Next, council will consider an amendment to City Code Title One, Chapter Six, Section Three. Increasing the mayor's salary as well as the salary of council members effective January first, two thousand twenty-four. Council, please note that you may take action separately on council compensation and mayor compensation. So first, we'll deal with the mayor compensation, followed by the council comp- compensation. Um, I'll now yield the floor to City Admins Administrator Jennifer Stapleton once again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as part of our process of um benchmarking our um. Professional career positions, we do at, we do receive information about mayor and city council member. Um, uh, pay stipends, compensation, how every city structures it. Um, is a little bit different, and we have come to council in past years and presented. Uh, information on where we stand uh relative to other jurisdictions. And so I I wanna include that tonight as well. Um, we have not made any adjustments, although we have presented uh information to council. We haven't made any adjustments to compensation for municipal officers. Um, since uh two thousand and fourteen, and the changes were effective two thousand and sixteen. I think what was the driver um for those changes back in two thousand and fourteen. Is our medical insurance costs were continuing to go up. Um, and our elected officials are able to participate in our employee benefit programs. And so we were in this interesting scenario at the time where um we had a compensation. For council members and elected officials, but depending on what plan elected officials were in, they were paying us the city. So um I think that's what what drove that last change that was um effective two thousand and sixteen. Um, again, we're using the same benchmarks with similar cities uh for council members. And a part-time mayor. Um, the average benchmark for council members uh in North Idaho. Is um currently nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. And the average benchmark compensation for a part-time mayor is twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. Um, we recommend that if the council um so chooses to um. Make changes that uh and and wants to be consistent with elected officials. With other jurisdictions in North Idaho. That um perhaps you wanna consider council member compensation at nine thousand dollars per year payable monthly. And mayor twenty-five thousand dollars per year payable monthly. Um, we're never um maxed out at um the very top end. Um, and that's true with our employees either, um with who in our region is paying the highest. So typically for us, that's usually gonna be the city of Porta Lane. Um, or city of Post Falls, but most commonly Porta Lane, cuz Porta Lane's looking over at what they're doing with Spokane. So they've got a bit of a different market, so that's where um we kind of average with them in there, and then we have some that are lower. And uh again, that's why our recommendation, if you do consider a change. The highest level, um because that's gonna be the larger city um in the north and and what they're paying. So mayor, I will.
Yeah, and I'll I'll comment, um, you know, as long as I've been involved with the city, uh, we've always been out of uh. Out of market for our elected officials. Um, and with the the one exception, we were, we were close. We we got close to being there in two thousand sixteen. But um, you know, to me, it's always uh made perfect sense that if we're um wanting to treat our employees equitably. And fairly and give them what they're worth, uh, what the market uh says is the value for that position. We should treat everybody equally, including elected officials. And I know it's always been hard for elected officials to sit up here and uh vote to increase their own salaries, but. It's easy for me to say this because I'm not running. So uh my term's over at the end of this year, and um I think it makes all the sense in the world, and Sandpoint deserves to pay uh the next mayor. Uh, twenty-five thousand dollars, what they're worth, and uh I I know what goes into this position. I know what goes into serving as a city council member, and nine thousand dollars um is uh a very small. It it it's uh not much of a compensation for what you, for what this position calls for, for what the city council position calls for. So um, I uh I think that is um doing the right thing for the city. I think it encourages uh more participation um when people feel like they're um. You know, th- this isn't fair compensation, but it feels like you're you're valued for the time and and effort that you put in. And um, you know, when I came in as a city council member, as Jennifer said, people were having to pay to to serve. Um, but depending on uh, you know, what their health insurance situation looked. So um, I think we need to, um, I think we need to get back in line with the market. And and treat our elected officials as every other city in North Idaho treats theirs. And I would open it up if uh council has any questions or comments.
Mayor, are we dealing primarily with the mayor position right now, or?
Yeah, yeah, right now, uh, well, that's the first motion that I'll make, but feel free to speak on either.
Yeah, I think with the the mayor position, I I I agree with you, that I think it'd bring more opportunity for individuals who are not necessarily independently wealthy. Or retired, an opportunity to serve this community, and I think it's a good idea. Yeah, Mr. Mayor. And the, with your proclamation saying that you are not gonna run, this is a, an opportune time to make that adjustment. So we are anticipating a another candidate, a different pool of candidates, and it's unbiased. We're able to make this increase with clear knowledge of this is gonna be for someone else. Um, as far as the council spot, I. I, nine thousand dollars is a lot of money. I know how much time and energy I put into this. I've seen how much time and energy you guys put into this. I might be alone in this. I think our compensation is fine where it's at. I think, I believe my compensation is fine. If we wanted to look at it at, at a fifth of that, and just to round numbers, and it's five grand, sure, or leave it alone. Mayor, absolutely, they work hard, and it now is an appropriate time, council. I'm appreciate that we can separate these two, and I I know, I know what I'm gonna, how I look at this, so thank you.
I'll make a comment.
No comment.
No, I would like to make a comment.
Oh, please do.
Um, you know, all of us are here for a very short time in the, in the grand scheme of things. And I've reached out. grand scheme of things. And I've reached out, you know, knowing that there's an election coming up this year to people in the community that I think would make good city council candidates. And the most common response I get is just a laugh like, why? Why would I do that? So Deb referenced my economics background previous and one thing I learned teaching economics was that you know, humans make decisions on the margins and, you know, the the pay we're going to get at city council is always going to be marginal. You know, all of us depend on other income sources, of course. But when, you know, knowing it's been nine years and knowing that all of us will only be here for a couple more years at the most. If we can make a small change today to increase that marginal benefit to future candidates thinking of serving the community, just as you said, just to let them know that like this service is valued beyond, you know, just your, like, I think most of us would do this for for nothing. I know I get, Kate always talks about how she's such a policy geek and she just loves reading our council packets. I do too. We all do. It's 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 a passion for all of us. But I have spoken to members of the community who think we're crazy because we are doing it for almost nothing. And and just that little extra nudge that that marginal increase could create to, you know, get some of those members of the community who don't need the income, but it is a tough decision to make that sacrifice to give up the many hours a week that we do for this for this job. So just a a counterpoint, Andy, that again, thinking about the future and incentive, if the mayor increase creates an incentive for good people to choose to serve, the same could be said for the the council increase as well.
Yeah, and it's, you know, every year, you know, we have this debate every year and and every year. You know, I've I've been on council for four years. I've been, this is my eighth year as more, seven and a half years in as mayor. And every council has such a hard time making this decision, which is why we continue to fall further and further behind. I don't know why other cities in North Idaho don't have this problem, but but we do. Anyway, so thank you for those comments. I I invite anyone else to, yeah.
I think that all I would add to Jason's comment is that it may actually allow some people with incomes that are kind of borderline and struggling to actually add a little bit to their bottom line and acquire health insurance and still have enough time in their world to spend doing good for their city. Whereas they may not have been able to without that little bit of extra income. So I think by doing it, we potentially open our arms as a council to more members of our community who maybe would like to do it, but just couldn't get there. Because we do have, as we often talk about up here on the dais, a significant amount of our population is impoverished or lower income. So it would be a nice way to reach out to them and say, you know, whatever that job is, maybe it's a service job and it's really borderline, but with this, it could really make a difference to their bottom line. And then just to be my own devil's advocate, I guess we're a proud bunch up here in North Idaho and we don't want to take anybody's tax money. So I think that's probably why it's been so hard to do that. Historically, the last time this was voted on, a lot of the members were stepping away from the council and say they felt comfortable voting for that increase and they also felt very comfortable knowing that it was pretty much just going to uncover the insurance instead of them having to write a check to the city every month to make up for the balance of that. So I don't know, for what it's worth, I just wanted to give you a little historical perspective on that.
Yeah, I really appreciate those comments, Deb. I think that's such a, maybe the most important point is is I I think it's critical that we open up the opportunity to serve to as as large of a section of our population as possible. And for those who are struggling just to make ends meet, whether it's a service industry job or, you know, working in the streets or a teacher, you know, the difference between, you know, four thousand and nine thousand dollars a year is is or having health insurance for your family. Is, you know, can can really make all the difference.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm like, I'm super choked up just thinking about this. I completely agree with the adjustment to the mayor's salary. As for a city councillor, it has been a privilege for me to serve in the health insurance. I don't, I don't think this community understands how much that this, that this is meant to to our family and the amount of money that we have saved. We've spent forty thousand dollars a year in healthcare only to, that's our deductible. That was our deductible before coming on to the city council. And I take that, I would take that right out of the business. And we'd get to December thirty-first and we'd spend thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars only for it to reset next year. I do not agree with the increase in the compensation. I am so fortunate to be sitting here and to be elected by this community and to get these benefits for my family and specifically my son who suffers from type one diabetic or type one diabetes and going from a thousand dollars a vial of insulin to thirty-seven dollars, I cannot tell you what that means for our family and the money that I can put back into my business and the the bonuses, the compensation increases that I can put forward to our community members that work for me. It it has been amazing and and I just appreciate this opportunity to have the benefits that we do and I hope the rest of the city staff. And for those of you that work for an employer that pays for your benefits, I hope you understand how wonderful you have it. Thank you.
Those comments.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I shared my thoughts on the mayor position. I I came in here pretty confident, you know, with my thoughts on the council pay and I appreciate councillor Rule and councillor Walker, your your councillor Dick, your thoughts. My thoughts were six years ago, I ran, I didn't even know this, we got paid. I was like, it's just want to do it. And although it's not a lot of money, absolutely right, there's there are benefits and I'm very thankful for that. But your guys' comments have challenged me. It is a struggle to even think about voting for something like this. It's kind of weird for me. Like, because I'm going to be here another two years. So it's a little different for me, but I do appreciate your guys' thoughts on that because I came in here pretty confident my way is the right way on this, but I don't think that's fair to the future. I'm I'm talking out loud. I don't think it's, one part of me says it's not fair to future candidates that could run and this could be a financial opportunity. But then I struggle because should it be a financial opportunity or benefit? Does that? I don't know. So those are my thoughts, but I will say that you guys have put some thoughts in my head right now that have caused me to think and pause on what what I'm gonna vote tonight. So I do appreciate your guys' heart in that. But, yeah, it's hard.
I would like, I'm very thankful for the for the for the insurance benefits as well, because I have worked for years without benefits. And so it truly is important. So the compensation like you is, I I didn't know, I didn't know either. I just wanted to do it because I wanted to serve my community. So I think that I it's it's a difficult situation because I I agree with both. I think we should raise the pay, but I also think that we should not raise the pay. So it's a conundrum.
All right. Thank you, council, for that thoughtful deliberation. Madam Clerk, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Molly O'Reilly.
I'm here in council. I live inside the city. And I'm the widow of a former council member. And we didn't need the insurance. We actually had better insurance. So he didn't take it. Um, we gave away the money because we didn't need the money. So vote to let the next council people have something that may encourage good people to run, particularly ones who would need a little money. And if you don't need it, give it away, give it back. But enable this to be a floor that more folks can can access. Thank you and thank you for your service, all of you.
Great comments, Molly. Thank you. Appreciate that. What an idea.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself for the mayor vote.
Okay. Let the record reflect, the council president is recusing herself from this vote. Of course, we don't have a motion, but here it comes hopefully. I'd entertain a motion to increase the mayor's compensation to twenty-five thousand two hundred dollars.
Some of second.
They moved in seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Council Rule?
Yes.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Council growth?
Yes.
Council Sprow?
Yes.
Council Dick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Maybe I will run again. It ain't, just kidding, okay?
To vote, so.
Next, we will entertain a motion regarding council compensation, raising council salary to, where is it, nine thousand dollars even. Is there a motion?
Some of.
And seconded. Thank you, Mr. Walker. This will be a roll call vote if there's no further discussion. Kate, do you want in on this one? We're going to bring the council president back in for this vote. Somebody's running for mayor, I think.
Council McAllister?
Yes.
Council Rule?
Yes.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Council growth?
I appreciate the debate. And this has opened my mind to the scenario of there might be someone on the sidelines, potentially a server that has needs that potentially this would, they have passion for our community and they just need potentially, I don't want money to be a barrier of entry. So absolutely, yes.
Council Sprow?
I I do appreciate all the the thoughts and conversations. I personally, I'm struggling with with the thought of serving, but I need more money. I'm not saying we don't need more money as as humans. And so this isn't a diss on anybody who needs more money. But my thought is, hey, I'm going to serve the community as best as I can with what it is. It is a sacrifice. It's part of reality, it's part of life, no matter which job you do. Respectfully, I'm going to vote no, but I completely respect and understand the yeses. We have no judgment.
No.
Right, motion passes. And moving on to the
Mr. Mayor? Hello?
Oh, yes.
Now you have an ordinance that needs to be enacted.
Oh, apologies. Lost my place here. Thank you, Andy. I will now read the title of the ordinance as follows, an ordinance of the city of Sandpoint and municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Sandpoint City Code Title One, Chapter Six, Section Three, providing for mayor and city council member compensation, providing for severability and providing for publication and an effective date. I would entertain a motion that the ordinance pass its first reading by title only and that the summary is approved. Is there a motion?
Some of.
Second.
They moved in seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Council McAllister?
Yes.
Council Rule?
Yes.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Council growth?
Yes.
Council Sprow?
Yes.
Council Dick?
Yes.
The ordinance as amended has passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings, once in the ordinance's entirety be suspended and that the ordinance pass its second and third readings under suspension of the rules. Is there a motion?
Some of.
Second.
They moved in seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Council growth?
Yes.
Council Sprow?
Yes.
Council McAllister?
Yes.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Council Dick?
Yes.
Council Rule?
Yes. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make a comment since we did have a wonderful discussion and debate on that is that when new council members do step forward, that they are informed about this debate in that what a wonderful comment Molly made that you don't have to take this money if you don't need it. And if you have better insurance, you can put that money back into the city or donate it to one of our many, many nonprofit organizations. So it would be nice if this discussion kind of stayed with the bottom line.
Okay. The motion passed and this ordinance is considered, number fourteen oh five is considered read, passed and adopted under suspension of the rules. Andy, I was just making sure you're still awake over there. At this point, I I have to leave right now. I'm going to hand over the final item to the council president who will take over from here. My apologies to everyone. I have to catch a flight down in Spokane and I wish you all luck. Final agenda.
Okay, we have two.
Okay, well.
There you go.
You get to then.
I get to.
Sorry.
Because it's ADA and
Oh, we do know it's it is in the proper order, so. So we should just have.
Because we have, yeah, we have.
So we should just have
this here, yeah.
The Historical Society and then the procurement policy.
Got it. Okay, great. Now we're all straightened out. Uh, next is a proposed partnership agreement with Bonner County Historical Society. I will now yield the floor to Arts and Historic Preservation Officer Heather Upton.
Thank you so much and good evening. It's so excited to, such an exciting moment for me to be up here. I just celebrated my year anniversary with the city yesterday. So what an appropriate time to share this. Thank you and I love it. Um, but leaving the museum was a really hard decision because I loved it. And I loved working with Hannah. Hannah, thank you so much for being here today. She's the executive director of the Bonner County Historical Society. And but to have the opportunity to support the museum's mission with bringing history beyond the walls was an opportunity that I could not resist. So I bring to you tonight this amazing partnership, an official partnership between the city of Sandpoint and the Bonner County Historical Society. This quote really resonated with me. We rise by lifting others and and I really believe in this. I don't believe in siloed work. I believe that when we all work together, the end product is so much richer and so much better for the community. And that's where this idea of a true partnership comes into play. And some of the details of this partnership are listed here and and their benefits for both organizations, the city and the museum. So we have access is a key point and that's the museum is generously through the partnership, allowing access to the city staff and any visitor that would be accompanying a city staff member. And we've already seen this in play when the Kalispel tribe came and they wanted to see the amazing exhibit that the museum put together upstairs, their important canoe culture. And then additionally, access to museum resources. We have an incredible preservation institution with the museum. There's over seventy thousand photos in their photo collection. They have ninety-seven percent of the newsprint ever printed in Bonner County and in plethora of archives and to be able to work with them and have access to those to better enrich all of the programming we're doing with the city and being able to use those to to be able to share our history at its highest is is an amazing opportunity. In terms of support, the museum is willing to work with us on projects and help assist with research, which is huge. They support us with the photographic collection. So those can be used for presentations. They're generously allowing up to ten photos with no charges to be provided to the teams with the downtown waterfront design competition. And and then capacity building, what can we do for the museum? There's so many opportunities and when they have the opportunity to, well, when we have the opportunity to be able to highlight the museum's photo collection or to talk about the different events they have going on through or to talk about the different events they have going on through our parks and recs, spreading the word of, you know, through a list of twenty five hundred or more and anything we can do to help support them and build the awareness and so forth is is a wonderful thing. And then that goes back to awareness. Having collaborative exhibits that can be outside of the museum walls and through the community. An amazing example of this is the four hundred foot wrap, the vinyl wrap that was around the unfortunate historic burn building. And I remember working with Jennifer, that was our first moment together on that exhibit years ago and and sitting outside and with my son and watching the whole community stop and it was locals and tourists and and to be able to share that history on that level was so incredible. Um, and can being able to connect the museum to opportunities and to different individuals in the community, let's talk about, you know, residential or commercial building owners that want to know more about their historic building or their historic home. We can send them to the museum and connect them to that incredible resource. And then the museum can benefit from that experience through maybe a sponsorship or so again, it's it's letting the world know that we are have this incredible museum here. Um, and and so it just goes back to that greater exposure. So those are definitely the things that we can do at the city to to support that partnership. Um, and thinking about the why, which you know, you may not need to know. Andy, thank you so much for your promotion. I promise we didn't talk ahead of time about that. Earlier the museum, but if you haven't been, I highly encourage you to go. It is such a jewel. Um, but let me tell you a little bit about why we would want to do this. Um, it is a hugely important cultural institution. So not only are they representing our the first peoples here with the tribes, they are also representing our community culture. And those were two things I like to point out when we talk about culture, right? Um, and in the arts culture and historic preservation plan, which I love, it was adopted in twenty twenty one. They are identified over twenty one times as an important partner. And this partner also, this partnership also accomplishes the following actions. Um, one point two, facilitate cultural networking and partnerships with local heritage organizations. Um, five point six, increase capacity building for local cultural organizations. Five point seven, enhance and augment local preservation, education and advocacy programs. And so many more that I can't even bring up because they're project specific, which I look forward to rolling out to you very soon because we've all been working hard on historic preservation advocacy things and oral history programs and so forth. So you'll be definitely hearing about that. And again, these are wonderful partnerships and moments that we're doing together. And I remember when I was considering, well, I made that decision to transition into to this career. I I said to everybody and I didn't even let them do a goodbye party because I said, this isn't the end. This is just the beginning of a new chapter. And this partnership represents that. So thank you so much for letting me share that. And my beautiful question slide isn't wanting to appear, but do you have any questions?
Does council have any questions?
There it is.
Is this what Sandpoint used to look like?
And I knew being at the end, I kind of had to bring some really like strong visuals. I wanted music, but it just didn't work out. Melissa wouldn't. Next time, okay.
Not a question, but a statement. The staff at the museum is amazing. Your volunteers at the museum equally as amazing. So I I have the fortunate opportunity to deliver there, so I get to see the Beehive really working and it I I don't necessarily look forward to retirement, but I do look forward to potentially spending more time at our museum in all the capacities.
New volunteer Hannah.
So, well done. There, we, it's a treasure to have you on this side as well as that common link between the two. And Hannah, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just to echo those comments as well, as somebody who lives right across the street and have taken all my family over there many times. Uh, working with both Heather and Hannah for artwork for the restaurants and knowing the other businesses that you two have worked with. Um, it's an amazing thing to have in our community. Our guests from out of town love it. We try to send as many people as we can that come to the restaurant uh, to take in that rich part of our history that's so well curated. Thank you.
And this weekend, there was a scavenger hunt. I was there for the Arbor Day thing. I wanted to do the scavenger hunt, but they wouldn't let me. I was short enough, but too old. Uh, anyway, are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this matter, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion approving the resolution for the partnership agreement with Bonner County Historical Society. City Agreement A two three dash two four one zero dash one two. This will be a roll call vote.
Councillor Dick?
Yes.
Councillor Rule?
Yes.
Councillor McAllister?
Yes.
Councillor Groth?
Yes.
Councillor Sprow?
Yes.
Councillor Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
For the final item on the agenda this evening, staff seeks approval of some updates to the city's procurement policy. I will now yield the floor.
Well, this policy is just updating some signature authority level at the very beginning from basically one cent to up to five thousand. We want to include managerial staff at the salary grade fourteen or higher to be able to approve those type of purchases in all of the levels of the of the policy. That's non, non-professional services, that's commodities, that's professional services licensed or unlicensed as well as construction. We're also adding a thousand dollar purchase order requirement. So any purchase a thousand dollars or more will require a purchase order, which is currently not within the policy. And then the table at the back end of the policy is being updated to reflect that new level of signature authority. And we feel this will provide just greater efficiency in operations, just keeping things moving forward. Um, and then over five thousand then becomes division head level. So that's the update. Any questions?
Any questions, counsel?
All for improving efficiency.
Yeah, that's what I thought it would streamline everything.
Yes, we're trying.
Right. Uh, any, are there any members of the public who would like to comment, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. All right. Uh, do I hear a motion?
No, it proves so moved.
Second. Okay, sorry, I would entertain a motion. Thank you. All right, this will be a roll call vote.
Councillor Walker?
Yes.
Councillor Groth?
Yes.
Councillor Dick?
Yes.
Councillor McAllister?
Yes.
Councillor Sprow?
Yes.
Councillor Rule?
Yes.
All right. With no further business before the council, this meeting is now adjourned at eight twelve PM. Have a good evening.